Okay, I'm gonna bring this meeting of Longdale City Council to order. Madam Assistant City Clerk, give us the roll call, please.
Yes. Mayor Protem Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Present.
Councilmember Talavera.
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Here.
All members are present, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Frank Talavera to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by retired Pastor Dwight Dudley for a word of inspiration. Please stand.
Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love that. One nation under God, indivisible. God is good. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people he has chosen as his own inheritance. The Lord looks from heaven. He sees all of the sons of men. From the place of his dwelling, he looks on all the inhabitants of the earth. He fashions their hearts individually, and he considers all their works. Father, I thank you for this great city, in this city of Longdale. Lord, for each of the council members, the mayor, the law enforcement, sheriff's department, father, fire department, and the city workers, those that work hard diligently every day to make sure that this city is one of the finest cities in the South Bay. Father, you have given such a wonderful staff, such great direction, and great love for this community and the people who reside here in this beautiful city of Longdale. Father, we thank you that you have blessed us with these servants who love you, who call for your word at their business meetings, Father, their council meetings. And we just ask that you pour special blessing out on our mayor, that you will bless him, strengthen, encourage him, as he is he who you've chosen, who you're walking and looking upon, Father, that he would do your will and your work here in the city of Longdale. So, Father, we thank you, we praise you for what you're gonna do tonight, for each of you that are here, Father, give them that comfort and peace and the ability to articulate the things that are important on their heart, and, Father, that they would have just that opportunity to walk away here tonight feeling like they were heard, and that there will be decisions made on behalf of those that live in the city of Longdale. So, Father, we thank you, we praise you for what you're doing in this beautiful city, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Bless you guys.
Okay, let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our captain of the Sheriff's, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Captain Palomino.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the city council, and members of the community. I'm Nicole Palomino, the captain of self-Los Angeles station, and I will be presenting the public safety report for February 19th through March 3rd. And I will begin by discussing some of the activity of Longdale deputies in the community. So, first, just to inform everybody, during this reporting period, Longdale deputies responded to 196 calls for service, which included citizens reporting suspicious activity, and requesting reports, and in addition, traffic collisions and crimes in progress. And during this period, there were nine documented grand thefts, and four of those were catalytic converter thefts. So, please be aware that those types of crimes are on the rise. With that being said, I would like to emphasize the importance of calling the sheriff's department if you observe a theft, or any crime in progress, or any activity that you think is suspicious. And then regarding our traffic-related incidents, approximately 26 citations were issued during the reporting period for various vehicle code violations, such as failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red traffic light, driving on the wrong side of the road, and speeding. And in addition, the city of Longdale also acquired two speed sign trailers that will be deployed at different locations throughout the city to help highlight and reduce vehicle speeds. And lastly, I want to remind everyone that the next Neighborhood Watch meeting is scheduled for March 19th, 6:00 p.m. at the Harold Hoffman Community Center, located at 14700 Bearden Avenue. Everyone from the community is invited and encouraged to attend, and I want to remind everyone that this is a fantastic opportunity for Longdale residents to gather and discuss important public safety issues with law enforcement and other fellow community members. And this concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Okay, thank you for that report, Captain. Is there any questions from the captain?
Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from Los Angeles County Fire Department. Let's hear from Assistant Chief Brian Kane.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Assistant Chief Brian Kane, Los Angeles County Fire Department, with your public safety report for the month of February. February was a relatively quiet month for us, as there were no fires to report. There were 189 total calls for service, 127 of those were EMS-related. Out of that 127, eight of them required ALS interventions by paramedics, and we had seven responses for the APRU within the city of Longdale for the reporting period in February. And that is the end of my public safety report, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, is there any questions of the assistant fire chief?
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next presentation is a retirement presentation from the retirement of Los Angeles County Sheriff Deputy Douglas Wada. Can you read it into the record?
Yes, absolutely. This retirement service recognition is presented to Deputy Douglas Wada of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department for 30 years of service. Deputy Douglas Wada began his law enforcement career in 1995 when he entered the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Reserve Academy. Law enforcement was a second career for Deputy Wada, as he had already dedicated 30 years to education as a teacher and administrator for the Los Angeles Unified School District, specializing in special education. As a reserve deputy sheriff, Deputy Wada performed all the duties and responsibilities of a full-time deputy sheriff, volunteering thousands of hours to protect and serve the residents of Lenox, Longdale, and South Los Angeles. Throughout his 30-year tenure, he served in various units, including the Narcotics Bureau, Operation Safe Streets, Emergency Operations Bureau, Logistics and Internal Affairs Bureau. His commitment to the community extended beyond law enforcement, as he actively participated in special events such as DUI checkpoints, parades, and routine patrols in Longdale. As we honor Deputy Douglas Wada for 30 years of dedicated service, the Longdale City Council, staff, and community extend their heartfelt gratitude for his three decades of dedicated service and unwavering commitment to public safety. Thank you.
Deputy Wada, why don't you meet us at the podium? Yeah.
Not much of a talker, but it was my pleasure. We're serving Lenox, South LA, and especially Longdale. I was trained in Longdale with, I'm sure you know Sergeant Sandy Nettles. He was at my FTO back in the day. So, that's, thank you all very much. And that's about all.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, let's move our agenda along. We're on oral communications, item E. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, if you'd like to do so. If you line up by the flag, when it becomes your turn, come to the podium. Start with your name, if you will. About two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. I noticed the last time, the amber light actually didn't come on. You have to look at that screen, because that light'll come on on that screen, if it's the same as it was the last meeting. Let's have our first speaker.
All right. Good evening, council, and Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to come up here and open up some dialogue on some concerns that I'm seeing in the news about an increase with tariffs with companies that are importing goods, and was wondering with our local businesses here in Longdale, is there anything that the council could do to help offset some of those costs? Or, you know, looking to, you know, helping make things more affordable for the resident. That's all I wanted to come up and ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly Osborne, good evening, from Ondondo Beach. As many of you know, I go to a lot of South Bay COG meetings. COG is the Council of Governments. The COG can make recommendations on projects affecting the South Bay to Metro. One such project, which mostly affects Longdale, is the 405 project from the 105 to Artesia. It would add auxiliary lanes on the 405. These lanes would still be on the Metro right-of-way, but what these lanes would do is eat up the greenery, separating the 405 lanes from people's houses or businesses. If the greenery is a steep embankment, for example, the embankment could be filled to make the row, I mean, to make the freeway have a bigger flat space, resulting in a huge retaining wall to someone's property. The COG does not like it to be referred to as a freeway widening project, so I will call it a freeway adjusting project. The effect is the same, more concrete, less grass. I only recently learned about this project six months ago, and I learned that Longdale does not like it. So, I did a little research. The Metro Board of Directors had just started saying, and this was last June and July of 2024, that they were not going to do projects that would further negatively affect an area that had been formerly redlined, because they were getting equity conscious. Guess what? Longdale was totally redlined back in the day, and here's where, this is Longdale, this is where the 405 is. That's where that whole project would be. So, by their own words, they don't want, they would not do this project. And so, they were, long story short, this item was supposed to be on the COG consent calendar to write a letter to support it, and after listening to me and others who called in for different reasons, the COG, there were members that did not support it, and they said, and we also have to have the cities that are really affected be here, okay? And so, later, it was pulled from the consent calendar. Now, here's why I'm bringing this up now. I naively thought that with a test this item would be dead and buried, but no. This past Thursday, at the COG meeting and a report by one of the COG executives, they were talking about how much it would cost for this project. Your council representative can't fill you in on the details, but what I noted was, no mention of the fact was made that the COG had not voted to support it. And now, what I'm concerned about is, a large number of the COG members, the representatives are going to be changing. The cities are gonna send different people, and they won't have had the background, and it could easily slip by, thinking that if a big COG person wants it, yeah, it's on the consent calendar, don't listen, say yes. And so, we've really got to be alert. That's why I am here. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Good evening, everybody in the public. My name is Juan Granados. I live on 147th Street, just a couple of blocks down. I came here today because there's been parking woes, parking troubles down my block, and I was wondering who to speak with about that, so that we can fix it. The other day, there was almost a fight with some people that are not even neighbors. Twenty-something years ago, a parking spot right in front of my home was amped away. I drove a small car, and what I would do was park all the way towards the front, so that another car could park. That was then. Now, parking is very hard to find, and lately, there's been a couple of scuffles on my block, because there's no parking. So, I was hoping to somehow fix that, maybe have somebody out there paint the lines again red to a couple of spots there, so that they know that there's only one vehicle per little square block there. Also, there was an individual here last meeting that was talking about the lights. There wasn't sufficient time, and the man is right, there isn't sufficient time here at 147th and Hawthorne Boulevard. Me being young, I tried to run, and made it almost all the way to the other side. I can only imagine somebody who's a little bit older than me, you know, 70s, 60s maybe, or somebody who's not able to walk as fast or run, they couldn't make it halfway. Please have that looked over. Also, well, no, that's all. Thank you for your time, everybody. Have a nice evening.
Hi, everybody. Chelsea Schreiber. I live in Longdale, Longdale-Gnome King. I'm here to talk to you guys, but mostly to people who are listening online. I've recently watched Toxic Town on Netflix. If you're in the area, I would recommend you watch it. It's very interesting. It pertains to the toxicity of the soil in Longdale and our fears, and it kind of proves to me that our fears are valid, and my worry that our fears will be swept under the rug, and that there will be repercussions for years, years and years and years for our kids, for everything. I'm mostly worried for William Green, the school that's six houses away from the row, and what could happen during construction. And I also just want to say thank you to you guys for standing up for us. Thank you for taking such good care of the residents and everybody who cares, being so receptive to it. And I just want to let anybody on Metro who's watching this is, we're watching you. We're keeping track of everything that's going on, and we will keep you accountable. So, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Matthew Harbison, Longdale Wesleyan Church. Side note, my wife is the city clerk, and she says hello. She's in Sacramento, and she's doing some things there, but she also wanted to extend her greetings. I'd wanted to bring a couple things sunlight. I know in the past, we had been talking a little bit about the wraps for some of the utility boxes around the city, potentially getting some art or something like that. And I've been talking to some other people in some other cities, and frankly, unless the wraps make it easier to wash, it's not necessarily a good investment, because the people who are tagging don't really care. That it's artwork, they're gonna tag anyway. And the way, the people who are tagging today, if it's easier to slap paint on it than having to redo that art, then I would encourage, if we're continuing to look at that, to put our money elsewhere, just because that is, it seems that in our situation, unless it's an easier clean than paint, that might not be an expense we would want to look at. Secondly, I did note that over on Ocean Gate, in front of the Food for Less Home Depot exit, they did get one of those stop signs that have the flashing lights that we were talking about before. It's definitely nice, but it's a good that it's a business district, but definitely not something that I'd recommend in a neighborhood, flashing in front of the houses. But it did catch my attention. I normally stop there, but it was, oh, wow, this is new. And so, if we want to alert people, I don't know if the flashing lights thing is still on the table, but it's nice, but I don't know if it's something that we want to continue to pursue as far as the expenses of it. And also, I just wanted to continue to say, good job, keep up the good work, fight the good fight, and let's hope that we can make the city better. So, thank you.
Very good. Is there anyone else who'd like to wish, wish to speak to this body on oral communications? Okay, CNN, we will close oral communications and bring it up to the diocese for any comments from the council. Let's start with Councilmember Frank Talavera.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming up today and sharing your thoughts with us. And these are things that we're gonna, we're gonna be able to look at, and like, Holly, just keep us informed, you know? And, you know, there's, these are concerns that are really, that affect our community, and they're on our hearts, so they're things that we're gonna want to fight and also promote when things are good. So, thank you for bringing all this to our attention.
Councilwoman Suarez.
Good evening. I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight, and Holly, thank you for bringing up the 405 auxiliary lanes. From what I understand, the COG was requested to support the project, but it's not necessarily under their jurisdiction to halt the project. So, it was put on hold specifically, I think, because cities requested that that project, we did not give support to it. And then, the one other thing that I want to bring up is with regards to the soil, if the city manager can update us, because we did have a response, I believe, from Metro regarding doing our own sample testing.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Metro did inform us today that they are denying our request to do a Phase 1, Phase 2 soil testing out on the row. They typically don't allow that on third-party reviews of their property, but they did say they're happy to allow us to, you know, peer review their special studies that they've completed. So, that's their response to our request to get our own soils experts out there to study any potential contamination on the site. Thank you.
And that's all the comments I had. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking, also spending your evening with us here. Are we still having for the businesses the incentive, like shop local, get refunded, the additional, was it $500 if we shop local?
Mayor, council, yes, it's still active. Ron's shaking his head, so I'll let him comment on that.
So, one way that we could help our cities is shop in Longdale for household plants, equipment, not food. We do not reimburse on that, but any supply stores. Shop in Longdale, and we'll be able to help them out with what's coming, those fees, the extra fees that they will be getting. And then, if we could ask the traffic committee to take a look at the parking situation throughout the city within the next, you know, couple of months, see if we could re-line or re-stripe some of the streets to accommodate, you know, a few more cars.
Mayor, council, I'll have Lucho meet with the property owners out there, and then we could look at that area and question.
And that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem.
Well, since my colleague, the colleagues to the left of you, to the far left of me, said everything, I'll just pass it on to you and say good.
Okay. Let me see, which one of these I want to comment on that hasn't, has not been commented on so far. Thank you, Dr. Osborne, for bringing that to our attention, the 405 extension project. I want to ask the city manager this question. You said they're gonna allow us to peer review their, the studies that they conduct themselves? And what does their peer review consist of?
So, if we hire our own peer review experts in this environmental review assessment of their special studies, they said that'd be fine. They're okay. We've already looked at them at a staff level, but if we want to hire X- We've already looked at them at a staff level, but if we want to hire experts, they don't mind if we peer review the studies that have already been completed that are part of the environmental impact report related to the project.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like we'll have the capacity, the authority to go out and get samples?
No.
To analyze?
Correct.
We're simply analyzing their samples?
Yes, their study only, their studies. Not, not that we get to send out our own experts and test the soil. They denied that request.
We just get to look at their report.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But...
But how is that peer review, though?
So, and during the environmental process, they've already prepared several studies related to the phase one of the potential contamination out on the site. So, when they, they mentioned in their email, there'll probably be a phase two when they start the construction process. And in that phase two, we could review their phase two with our own experts in the field and peer review their findings of their studies. But we don't get to go out and they're denying our request to hire our own experts and go out and test the soils.
And we don't get to test their, their soil that they collect, collected?
We, we hire our experts to look at what they collect, their methodologies, their findings, all of those things. They call it a peer review.
In other words...
I don't see how that's...
Test their soil. They test a pound sand, they research what they have on paper, that's about it.
So, basically, mayor, council, we would argue, their experts would argue with our experts if the council directed us to hire our own peer review experts in that field. They would argue with their experts that potentially, based on the methodologies typically is where you look at, and the findings.
But how do we know that there are samples? Because I could probably go down to Torrance, get a sample there and say, it's Landale. I'm sorry, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Well, typically, not arguing with the council, of course, but typically, how what they do is they provide core samples of the soil and they have to document it and provide a map, and they show us where they pulled the soil samples and whatnot. Off the top of my head, I remember there was some potential contamination on the site that they need to potentially remediate after completing a phase two and potentially a phase three, which would include a cleanup of any potential contamination. But right now, they just did a preliminary, it's a phase one, I believe, in the, in the study, EIR. It's a dental...
I don't know if I, if I can trust that. But we'll talk about it more. That's all I have. So let's move our agenda. We're on item G, consent calendar. What is the pleasure concerning such? Bernadette Suarez wants to speak.
I'd like item G eight to be polled for a separate vote.
G eight?
Yes. City clerk compensation.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll set that aside for a separate vote, item G eight. What is the pleasure of this board concerning the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation with the exception of polling number eight.
Okay, it's been made, the motion's been made that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of item eight by Mr. Pat Kearney and seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes, except for item G eight, which will be a separate vote, excuse me, thank you.
Okay, well, let's take up G eight at this time. Eight, G eight, the second reading of the city clerk's composition. Any discussion on this item?
Just gonna reiterate my comments from previous. I don't believe that the compensation should be raised to those levels, considering it is a ceremonial position. And with that, I'll have the vote.
Mr. Pat Kearney.
I'm gonna make a recommendation to go with staff recommendation here. Adopt ordinance 1209-25 and amend chapter 2.16 of Landale municipal code regarding compensation for the elected city clerk.
Okay, the motion has been made by Kearney that we accept the, the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote?
For item G eight, the motion passes with Councilmember Suarez voting no.
Okay, we're on item 10. 10 is a public hearing for consideration of a request from Republic Services proposal for solid waste service rate increase for 2025 by adoption attached resolution. So this is a protest hearing. I would now ask the Public Works Director Rodriguez to present the staff report.
Thank you, mayor and council members. For this presentation, Grace Wizard, senior management analyst, will take the microphone. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, city council members and city manager. This public hearing was officially scheduled on January 6th and it was duly noticed in accordance with the provisions outlined in proposition, in the Proposition 218 notice. The Prop 218 notice and a protest ballot was mailed on January 7th to every parcel within the city, including both residential and commercial properties. The purpose of today's hearing is to consider the proposed refuse collection rate increase for the calendar year 2025, as requested by Republic Services, the city's franchise solid waste and recycling hauler. This proposed rate adjustment is being brought forward for your consideration. We appreciate the participation of the residents and the businesses in this process. As of today, city clerk's office has received a total of 53 protest ballots and we look forward to hearing their feedback on this important matter. At this time, I'd like to provide you with a brief overview of the proposed rate adjustment. On October 1st, 2024, Republic Services submitted a rate increase for the calendar year 2025 in accordance with the terms outlined in the city's franchise agreement. Staff reviewed the request and confirmed that the proposed rate adjustment of 6.25% is in compliance with the rate adjustment formula specified in the franchise agreement. Additionally, staff verified the accuracy of the calculations supporting the proposed increase. The proposed rate adjustment is presented for your consideration in resolution number CC-2501-003, which establishes the new rates to be effective January 1st, 2025. The adjustment applies to both residential and commercial properties throughout the city as detailed in the Prop 218 notice that was mailed to all parcels. This rate increase is necessary to maintain the financial sustainability of refuse collection and recycling services, ensuring the continued provision of these essential services to the city's residents and businesses. The proposed resolution is now before the city council for review and action. This concludes my report on the proposed rate adjustment. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide further clarification as needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, those comments. Next, I will open the public hearing. It is now 7:06. The public hearing is open. All protests must be submitted prior to the close of this public hearing. Please submit your protest to the assistant city clerk. Now, I now open the public hearing. Any wishing to speak on this matter? If you're wishing to speak on this matter, please, like we do in public comment, approach the, the microphone, give your name first. You won't have a time limit.
A very brief comment. My name is Juan Granados again. I live on 147th Street. This is the first time I hear about this. This is, again, never received anything in the mail. I don't know if anything has come up. I've never heard any neighbors talk about it. I think this is something that neighbors would care a lot about because of what's going on at the moment. Again, this is the first time I hear about it. I'd like to know more about it, but I think I'd be too late to hand in my, my protest. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't expecting to come out to talk to you guys tonight. It's nice to see all of you, council and mayor. I only have one comment. Yes, the cost of doing business, regardless of if it's in the city of Landale or elsewhere, has gone up. I would like for each one of you to remember before you vote tonight, in their contract, it also said that we get new trash trucks. I don't see them on our street. And I would suggest that we take a look at the contract because we're, maybe we should be charging them something for not providing us the service that is in their contract, which is, I think, almost over. I think we only have about another year on that contract. So, just remember, when you're voting, that that's also a piece of it that I'd be considering. Thank you.
Okay, are there any wishing to provide comments in this public hearing? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna issue the last call for written, written protest for the solid wa, solid waste rate. Please turn in your protest if you wish to be counted. Protest received after the close of this hearing will not be counted. Okay. It is now 7:08. The public hearing is closed. Are there any council members' comments or questions? Oh, I keep forgetting that we got this. Okay, go ahead.
This is a question for Public Works. You mentioned 53 residents protested, but how many vouchers or pieces of paper were sent to residential? Because I know that in our neighborhood, we didn't get it. Or if we did get it, it just looked like a simple piece of paper that we tossed away. It wasn't a ballot. I know that for a fact.
Well, it was a three-page pamphlet and the last fourth page was the protest ballot. A total of 10,514 notices were mailed out, 10,514. We serve 5,852 parcels, but parcels and billing addresses are not the same. A parcel could have multiple addresses that need to receive this notice. So we have proof of the mailer that Republic Services handled for the city and paid for it, and we have proof from the mailing service of how many parcels, how many letters were mailed out on January 7th.
Okay. I just, personally, I haven't seen that. And I'm in, on 147th, and I'm pretty sure Juan is talking about the same thing. We didn't see anything in that area. Is it, could we open it up for another two, three weeks and see if we could find those ballots or if it's, could be redone? Because 53 out of 10,000 that were sent out is not many. I, I have a feeling we would have more if people knew about it.
We could extend the current public hearing or keep it open, but it would be unusual to remail. And the reason it would be unusual to remail, that's a cost that's borne by the provider. And as, as the senior management analyst said, the cost has been borne, staff did the mailing in accordance with normal city procedures. So while we could hold the, the hearing over to see if additional protests came in, it would not be, it would not be proper to charge the service provider twice, so the city would have to pick that up. And then you get into issues of the service provider potentially saying that the city was giving too many cuts at, at, at the issue. What would be probably a preferable option would be for staff to take direction about how to publicize those notices, because this will have to be done again next year. This is only a one-year, and it has to be done again next year as part of their contract if they want any increase. So, we, staff could take direction on what the envelope should look like, or something like that, to make next year's more clear to the people receiving it. But other than simply continuing tonight, I wouldn't suggest any other action.
If, then I would like to see if we could push this until next meeting to place a vote and see if we have any other ballots in that, that get turned in. Now that we know that we need to look for a three-page pamphlet, is that what it is?
It's four pages.
A four-page pamphlet.
Well... If I could...
Do you know if it says ballot or vote or...
It does. It says, I have what was mailed out here. But if I could also just read you one sentence from, from the staff report, the fourth paragraph, it says, "The city currently provides solid waste services to approximately 5,852 parcels. Therefore, for the proposed rates to be considered for approval, the city must not receive a majority protest." 50% plus one equalling, that equals to 2,927 or more.
Okay.
I'm not gonna make that. That's it from, Mr. Pat Kearney.
I also did not receive anything from Republic. I had to use a sample, one the city sent to council, to cast my vote. So I didn't get anything on that side either. So, I don't know how they did it, but I think they're hit and missing. I know we have a representative from Republic here tonight. Also, the question that Ms. Hoffman, Hubbard-Gorman brought about trucks, we supposed to have that trucks two years ago and we're still waiting.
That's right. They still have a backlog of being able to purchase the new trucks, but unfortunately, they are paying liquidated damages on, because they're not in compliance with the contract. So every quarter, we assess liquidated damages and they pay.
Okay, well, I understand we don't have enough votes and I don't want to say it's not because our residents didn't receive them. They probably didn't, half of them probably didn't receive anything. Because I looked for it January 7th, I had to get nothing in the mail. So I, I think it was a fly-by-night mailer. I don't think it went out to all the residents. I think they did enough to cover their butts and say, yeah, they mailed them all out to everybody. But I know we don't have enough to, to prolong this. We don't have the 2,927 to pass it. So, I know we, we can do it again next year, the city attorney said, so I'll wait to see what else the council says about it.
Councilmember Frank Telavera.
I did receive it. And my landlord did receive it because she's one of the protest ballots. So, so I know it went out at least to some of us. But my question is regarding our most vulnerable residents, which would be the seniors, citizens. And, and I know it says here, "A senior discount is available to seniors 65 years of age or older." Do you know how many of our senior residents have applied or have, or even know about this? How many are taking advantage of this option?
I don't have a number, but I, this year alone, we've received dozens and dozens of applications that we've processed. I'm not even sure if Dawn has a number off the top of her head, but we can get that information and bring it back to you.
And would there be any way to, to maybe change the verbiage on this? Because there are seniors that are retired that are not 65, like myself, you know? And I, I put my 30 years in for everybody else. I just started young. But I'm on a fixed budget, you know? So I think if there was some way to, to help our senior residents that are, that are even maybe younger than 65, I don't know if that's, I don't know if 65 is the social security number, if that's it or not, but that's one question.
Don't check the discipline code.
Okay, and the other question is regarding the, the mailer, did we have, or did we include a self-addressed stamped envelope?
No.
Okay, because that could have been, that could be part of the problem that, because if people have to do, take that extra step, they, most people won't. So that means that we're limiting their, their involvement, you know, their engagement with the, with the system. And in this day of... And in this day of uncertainty with finances, you know, I understand, you know, the need to raise the rate, but my question always is like, well, when do I get a rate increase? You know? I can go without buying eggs, but I can't go without throwing my trash out, okay? Because then I'll have another problem, right, Michael? Like a problem that was on 156, okay? So it puts me in a predicament. And I just think, you know, it just, it looks, it looks bad, and it's in bad taste. That's my opinion. And I know their need, you know, with what they're quoting here, that of why, but it's, you know, it's just difficult, I think.
I understand.
That's all I have to say.
Yeah, so I had a few questions. I think the city attorney would be the one to answer these. What are the requirements with regards to notices being sent? And do we know if other cities or other waste haulers have the same process with regards to notifying the public?
So anybody who has to do a Prop 218 vote would have the same requirements, and that requirement is that the ballots are sent out to the prop, to the owner of the parcel. So by sending out and notifying not just the parcel owners, but also all of the account owners, the city has actually gone above and beyond what is required by law. But yes, everybody doing a Prop 218 vote has the same requirements.
Okay. And then my next question is for staff. You mentioned liquidated damages. Do we know approximately how much the city has received due to the trucks not being updated?
About 180,000, only for the trucks?
I guess total.
In 2024, about $180,000.
Okay. And that goes to the general fund?
I believe, I believe so, yes.
I'm going to make a suggestion. Since it had to do with trash-related services, if we could look at possibly using some of that money, I mean, I don't know if we have the money since it was put in the general fund, but possibly offsetting some people that are really struggling, coming up with some criteria, and using that money that was received to offset some of the costs that maybe some of these residents are facing.
Mayor, council will look into that and get back to you on that.
And then I think you mentioned the senior citizens discount. How many people have applied? Yeah, those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Going back to the senior citizens, how many senior citizens have applied? Because just because you're a senior citizen does not make you automatically eligible. Because according to this, it says senior citizens over the age of 65 or older, and considered head of household. And that's, that's a tax designation, head of household. So what is head of household for this purpose?
So basically, the person applying for the discount needs to live in the home, and pretty much the account should be under their name.
And that makes you a head of household?
For this trash discount. That's what we look for.
Okay. Okay, good. And let's see, if you're a senior, it's going up approximately $2, depending on which court you have. But then if it's a commercial property, it's going up approximately 16, if it's a commercial account, if I'm calculating it correctly. I know I got a complaint before. I don't know if they sent in a protest, this commercial, it's a store, but they were telling me how expensive it is compared to other cities on the commercial side. So I'm sure when I go in there tomorrow, they're going to be complaining.
Well, compared to other South Bay cities, Longdale per commercial is kind of in the middle, or not on the low or high end.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I have. Are there, are there any further council member questions or comments? Okay. The council will now consider a resolution to approve the protest results and adopt a new solid weights, solid waste rate fee schedule, right?
Yes. Excuse me, Mayor Polamont Miles, may, excuse me, may I announce the results?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Please do.
The results are as follows. 53 valid protests were received prior to tonight's public meeting. Zero protests were received this evening, for a total of 53 protests received. Based on the results, there are insufficient protests received for a majority protest. 2,927 protests were required. Thank you.
Okay. So, Madam City Attorney, do we have to take a vote on this? Or is it automatic because we didn't reach the...
No, we still have to vote to adopt the resolution.
Okay. All right. What is the, I have a question.
You got a question, okay.
Grace, great job. Can we have the representative from Republic up the microphone?
Sure. Dawn Harris-Benton from Republic Services.
My question for Dawn, is there some, some way you can find out how many mail was mailed out to the city of Longdale? Because I don't think everybody got, received one. Because I didn't, the young man back there didn't receive one. Councilmember Quavis did receive it.
I can find that out.
Yeah, okay. And then, do we have any status on the trucks yet?
So, yes. So we definitely have, we are testing some EV trucks right now to make sure that they can make it all the way through the route. We are also testing infrastructure. We've had people out to our site to look into building, I can't think of the word right now, but to be able to plug in and fuel the EVs. So they are in the testing part right now, and it looks like we should have them within the next four to six months.
Okay. And also with that, are they going to have the nets catching on top so the trash doesn't blow out when they go down the street? Because we have a lot of problem with that, too.
I don't actually know if they have a net like that, but we will be able to bring one, and we can put one on display at here or someplace so that everybody can come and check it out, see how it works.
Okay. Because I know one time, you're supposed to have the net on top of it so the trash doesn't blow out as they're going down the street, when the trucks must be ordered. Okay, thank you, Dawn. Okay.
So I guess we have no...
We luckily...
Will we, I'll motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I guess we'll only have to second it, but we can revisit it next year. So make sure we get the ballots out. People be aware of it coming in again. Don't just throw it away because it says Republic on it.
And with that...
So the motion has been made by Quavis that we accept the staff recommendation by adopting the said resolution and it was seconded by Suresh.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, with the council, please vote.
For item number 10, the motion passes four yeses and one no. Councilmember Talavera voted no. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, madam. We're now on item 11, update on the results of the 2024 illegal fireworks suppression details.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The staff report you have before you is an update on the 2024 illegal fireworks suppression detail. At the March 3 city council meeting, councilmember Quavis inquired about how many citations were issued and how many were upheld that were appealed. As you may recall, 33 sites were issued by our deputies in the 2024 illegal fireworks suppression detail. Of those 33, 12 people contested the sites. Of the 12 that were contested, seven were upheld and five were dismissed. That concludes my report, and I can answer any questions you may have.
It usually take about a couple of seconds for it to light up after you touch it. I just learned that.
I'm learning.
Go ahead.
All right. Michael, the funds that we just, we received from the citation, will be reusing those funds for this year?
They will go into the general fund, and then typically, the detail costs about $30,000 to $33,000, depending on how many deputies we get. Last year, we had 10 deputies, so it was about 30, excuse me, $28,000, I believe, is what we paid for two days of overtime for, for the deputies we had.
And are we starting to have talks with the committee about what's going to happen? Because we're already in March, July is a few months from now. So I want to make sure that our residents are aware of what's going on, maybe start advertising if we can about...
We can certainly do that. We would definitely always put the information out well before the holiday. Sergeant Smith and I have talked a little bit about what we're going to do this, this year. The detail is pretty structured, that we make slight tweaks to it to every year, so it's mostly been about the same. But yeah, we'll definitely put something out, and we'll have something presented to the fireworks subcommittee prior to releasing it to the public. So we can get that out very quickly.
Thank you.
Mr. Pat Kearney.
So my question to you, Michael, I'm going to keep it short, okay?
Yes, sir.
Of the 33, 28 of them were upheld, five were dismissed, correct?
Correct. Well, 28 were upheld. Not everybody pays their sites, so we, that should be $70,000 in citations, $70,000 not yet been collected. Unpaid sites, like all sites, go to collections.
And as far as the fireworks subcommittee is, we're meeting councilmember Talavera, and I'm meeting on the 18th of this month, correct?
Yes.
Fireworks, we'll be on the 18th, so we'll keep you informed.
And Sergeant Smith and I can have some cursory plan before that date for you to discuss with you.
My question is, for what reasons were the five dismissed?
I can look into that. In some cases, if the evidence wasn't strong enough, we weren't in all the hearings, so I'd have to look into it. Of the five, I should say that four were dismissed by our hearing officer, one was actually dismissed at Superior Court of Los Angeles. Anyone who gets a citation from the city doesn't have to go through a hearing process. They can elect to go directly to the courts if they choose, and that person did. So that one was dismissed by a Superior Court judge. The others were dismissed by our hearing officer.
But we don't have any information as to why?
We, we get that.
Insufficient evidence, you said?
Yeah, I know, in at least one case, there was, they felt the evidence wasn't strong enough, so they dismissed that one. But we can get the information on why the others were dismissed, if you'd like.
Yes, please. Thank you.
It's received and filed? Received and filed?
Okay, what is it?
It's received and filed.
What is the pleasure of this body concerning this? Just received and filed?
Yeah.
Okay.
You received it, I filed.
Okay. Okay, that shall be done. Okay, we're on item 12, the First Amendment for the On-Call Civil Engineer Service.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Lucho Rodriguez, Public Works Director. This item is to talk about our on-call firms that we have for the engineering services at the city. The contracts were approved by council a year ago, and they expire on March 4 of 2025. The on-call firms provide services, expedite in the process a little bit for the city. So it's, in my opinion, it's good to have always on-call these firms to help us out. We have five firms on-call. All of them are hoping that these contracts will be extended for one year, and therefore, I'm here asking for council to approve the First Amendment to their contracts, and we can keep them for one more year. Thank you. If you have any questions, let me know, please.
Bernadette Suarez.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about, what's the difference between this and like augmenting services? Is this just if we are very short-staffed, or there's something time-sensitive that we can use them at these rates?
The difference between on-call and augmented, staff augmentation is what you refer to. Sometimes, some of the on-call firms can be used for staff augmentation if we do explain that in the, in the scope of services. So it could be used, we could borrow people, if you would, contract through them when we are short-staffed, sure. The services we have now, for example, will be for construction management, which, in a way, will be a service where we will have a construction manager helping us out with the projects that we're going to go into construction coming up very soon. And also inspection services for, for example, big street paving projects, that's where we contract with the inspector, with a company from here to do inspections. But at the same time, these people help us with design of services when we need design or reports for other causes. For example, traffic engineering as well. We have a separate group of traffic engineering firms, but that's the purpose. They come and prepare reports for us.
So when I look at this report, I don't see a budget item, but that would mean that it's project-specific. So if we need these services, they're allocated towards specific projects? Is that what I'm getting? So that's why we don't see it as a line item?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. That's exactly how it works. So we still need to ask for a proposal from all of them for certain project, and the payment comes from the project's budget.
And then what we're specifically deciding at this time are the rates at which they would be charging were we to use them?
Correct. The rates for the next year as well, and extending the contract because it will expire.
So we're essentially not saying you can use them whenever you want. It's just, you know, we will agree to use them as needed, but we're still going to approve the amounts in which we're going to use them for each project?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peckerny.
Okay, Lucho.
Yes.
I wanted to ask you a question, but I'm going to go a little further. So the money we're spending on this is based on the project and return on the project? There's no out-of-cost pocket from the general fund or any measure, AM or Prop A money?
The funding comes from whatever was approved for that project at budget time.
So no money, no cost to the city? It's based on the project?
In some cases, could be a cost from the, for the city, depending on where the funding came. If we did fund a project from general fund monies, there will be some coming out of there. However, we try always to be out of another fund that supports the project.
Okay. Now, my big question, I think last year, I asked the same question. Of these, there's five individual groups, they're consulting firms. None of them can pay back on another one, so we can cut it down to four or three? Are they all specific in their field, line of field?
In this case, they are all for engineering services, and they all had the same scope when, when we picked them. For the future, because these are eventually going to expire, we can be more specific on... we can be more specific on, on what services they can provide. The reason cities like a bigger number of them is so that, that we are transparent in how we pick, and, and they still have to provide a proposal, and then we can compare best price. Otherwise, sometimes some, some, the public or even staff thinks, hey, wait a minute, we only have one or two. There's not much competition there on, on their proposals. That's how, at least, we, we look into this. It's, it's more of an open...
So let me understand.
Yes.
Right. So you hold, we have these as needed, correct, on-call?
Correct.
So let's say we needed something to public works on, on a project. Do we reach out to all five of these groups and ask them, ask them to get the lowest bid? Or is it...
Yes.
It's the lowest bid?
Not necessarily the lowest bid, but, but yeah, we ask for pricing, and then it depends on complete, completeness of, of the proposal, for example. And I wanna cite a, a specific example right now is that I reached out to all of them for a particular project, and two of them said they, they couldn't provide the services at that time because they were busy and they weren't quite experts on that particular case. So then I have three others to, to compare prices.
So these are on-call. Is there a price associated with on-call, these five, or is it...
An hourly, hourly rate for all the staff that they could provide, from engineering to...
So we're paying for five consultant firms that are setting on their fingers, and we're paying them?
No, no.
Okay, that's what, that's the question I asked. Or not, okay?
I'm sorry, no, we don't pay a single dollar until we have a project as needed. And then we pay from funds already budgeted.
Okay, but I'd like to see, I know we have to do this because it expires tomorrow, but I'd like to see it being cut down from five to maybe three firms that all do the same thing. I know it's kind of late because tomorrow's...
In that respect, I have a, a proposal for when we come up next year with some on-calls, where we could do it a little better. But, but this time, it'll be hard, hard now deciding which one of the three to keep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Frank.
Okay. Lucho, I just wanted to ask, get some clarification. So from the five companies here, according to their, their attachments here, so each one has their own schedule of rates?
Correct.
Okay, so, and it could be different. Some of them, sometimes it could be the same, but in other things, it could be different.
Correct.
So we would, so you would typically go with the lower price?
When they are providing a proposal for the same scope of work, absolutely, we, we will pick prices considered in, in the selection of, of the official.
And to have five on, I guess this is like on retainer, right?
It's similar to having them on within, yeah.
So to have these five, does that mean that we, we lack this service in-house?
Yes. I think that's exactly what it means. However, if I may expand a little bit, the big agencies, large agencies, still have on-call services for all the specialties. For example, and that's one in the future I want to present to you, there's on-call for soil engineering, and instead of going for an RFP, let's say when we have to, to do the right-of-way now, you go directly to those on-call, and, and it saves quite a bit of time. So in some cases, it's because we don't have the services. In some cases, it's because they're too specialized. In this case, they are general engineering services that we're getting through them.
So do you, can you anticipate, or if we gave you, if you had a wish list, would we hire these people in your department to do this work? Or would this just be like an as-needed basis because the work comes, comes in so infrequently?
That is a great question, and it is, I think you touched on it at the end, it's infrequent. For example, we are going on to, council will see in March, three bid openings, reports coming up, and we will need services for those for construction management inspection. But then the following year, we may not necessarily have three. Therefore, it's infrequent, and it is more convenient, I believe, having on-call help instead of, in some cases. But we're kind of talking two different things a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just so that, that I'm clear. So are we just adding, are we adding services? Are we simply extending the contract?
This time, we're extending the contract for one more year at the new rates because the, the rates were, the original contract had the, all the rate of a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
A motion to approve staff recommendation.
Okay, there's been a motion that we...
And I'll second it.
Staff recommendations by Amquavis and seconded by Talavera. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number twelve, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Item J, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Just real quick, I wanted to let the public know. I've had some comments from the community. We're bringing the, as per requested by a council member, we're bringing the speed-hump policy at the next agendized meeting. I've had several comments about that and requests, so I just wanted to let everyone know that we will have that item on there if you're interested in it. But please come in and participate. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item thirteen, letters to state federal legislators regarding metro project funding gap.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'll take this one real quick. This is a request from the mayor. We drafted this, this letter. It's for the, it's not for the row. I want to be clear about that. I had several comments and questions about this over the weekend as well, and I responded to the residents' concerns. This is for the alternative, seeking additional funding for the alternative, the Hawthorne route. I want to be clear, not the row route. So I received several calls about this over the weekend. I tried to answer them and put everyone's, calm their fears. This is a request so we can not affect the row residents, seeking requests and funding from other federal sources for the, for the Hawthorne route, if possible. That's all, this is the draft. Your consideration for the council. And that concludes staff's report.
Okay, Bernadette Suarez.
Wait, do we have to ask questions first, and then comments, and then...
No.
Right?
No, you can ask your question.
Okay. I guess my question is, why is this request coming now? From what I remember, the other cities sent the letter back, I want to say last year. So I feel like it would have been more effective to send them all together. I mean, because I think at this stage, I don't have much hope with, you know, the current administration granting any funds. I mean, that's just me. I just feel like it's, it's gonna go out there into space.
Yeah.
Any, any response?
Oh, oh, Mayor, council, I'm sorry. Excuse me. We, the idea is to try to, try anything possible, to try to seek any kind of funding, is my understanding. It was, the impetus behind the draft letter is to see what we can get, and we never know, things could change. But the idea was to put the letter out there and get it out there and, and start requesting additional funding so we could lessen the impacts and mitigation, mitigate those impacts to the row. Notwithstanding the comments from the council and the concerns, it's a little late, but in what the current administration's doing today.
Okay, Mr. Pat Kearney.
I pushed that? No, I didn't.
Madam Quavis.
Do we know why we didn't send it out when everybody else sent their letters?
Mayor, council, I can check into that. I don't recall, and I'd have to look into that and get back to you on that.
And do we think that this is gonna, like you said, it's putting it out there, but are we gonna be following up with, did you get my letter? And I want a response whether yes or, or no?
We definitely certainly can do that. Staff can follow up with whoever we send that letter to and see if there's any opportunities for additional funding.
Thank you.
Bernadette Suarez.
Sorry, who are we sending this to exactly? Our state senator? I mean, sorry, you said... Because it says state led, state, federal legislators.
I believe, my apologies, it's both. It would be both. We're seeking funds from both, state and federal. Or whoever the council, you know, if you guys have any specific legislators we, legislators we can send it to, we can certainly do that as well and target it.
And then my other question is, the big conversation that we've said in the past is, if we get federal funding, wouldn't that enact NEPA?
That is correct. It would definitely kick in NEPA.
So wouldn't that make the costs go up even higher?
Uh, well, yeah, it could, it definitely would cause a delay in their project, which could theoretically cause the, you know, right, cost increases. Plus, they have to do the same studies for the NEPA document, the Environmental Impact Study that they're doing for the SEQA and the California Environmental Quality, which is different but somewhat the same, so they are different, yes. So it could increase the cost for Metro. That's correct.
My only other issue is that I think it somewhat seems like we support a pro, we support having rail through Londo. That's my only issue. I think initially, when we made the decision, it was if we had to choose between the options, we would choose the Hawthorne Boulevard alignment. I just feel like some of the language in here is, seems like we support rail going through Londo.
Go, go ahead. Just a couple of questions. Is this letter coming from the mayor himself? Is it coming from the full council? And if it's a full council, I'm gonna vote, I'm not gonna sign it because I'm, I'm sticking to my guns. I want a no building Londo. I don't want to divide the cities, one half to the other half. I want a no building the city. I'm sticking by my guns on that one.
Mayor, council, it's, it could be from the mayor or from all the council signing it. It's whatever the direction of the council. We can also wordsmith it as well and bring it back. Or we can, before we, I can send it to you all. We could wordsmith it and make it clear that we're not, we don't like the projects, even all the alternative, but we're, you know, seeking at least the Hawthorne route to be the best route if it has to go through.
So my question is, I've been meeting with some of, some members of the community regarding the metro and the row, and, and I don't know if I'm getting mixed messages, but I just wanted some clarity, because I personally am against it. So I don't want to see any metro coming through Londo, dividing Londo. But here, it's like, it's, did we, did we already choose an alternative? Because it's, will it happen no matter what?
So I can, I can answer that. So the council provided direction on the alternative, supporting, limitly supporting the Hawthorne route. It's not the best alternative.
Yeah.
But it's better than the row route because there's thousands of people that'll be directly impacted, it's the most densest areas in the city of Londo. With regards to the other question, can, is it a foregone conclusion? I would say we're still not there yet. We still have avenues pursued for the city, legal as well. So it doesn't necessarily mean it's a done. And I just want to point out to the council that there has been delays, because if you recall, Metro said they were gonna move forward. There's been delays in the project. We'll see what happens. I'm, I'm confident that the residents, or we've, the council's graciously provided buses for our residents to go out and, and protest this project, so we'll have to see. But ultimately, as I mentioned to our city attorney and our special counsel, this will ultimately probably be handled and finalized in the courts if, if I get direction from the council to move forward in that direction. That's where I see this going, because that's where we pressed really hard on Metro. So I would say it's still not over. We're still fighting it, as we have for many years, and we're not giving up the fight.
Okay. Thank you.
Quavis.
I, knowing that most likely it's gonna happen, I would like to bring this letter. If you could bring it back with changes, saying that we're not committing to number three or alternative three. I would like to see where we're still opposing, but, you know, there's, and the majority of us don't want it, but, you know, we still want to push number three if we have to. Just fix the verbiage, a little bit like Bernadette said.
I, I can, I, I definitely, you know how I write, so I'll definitely add it up and spice it up. And if the council continues it, we can bring it back at the next meeting and then see what you, give you a couple of drafts, see what you think.
Bernadette Suarez.
Sorry, I just, I, I don't, I don't know that sending a letter's gonna do anything, so I'm not in support of it, just because I, it's gonna go on deaf ears. And that's me.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, there is a member of the public that would like to speak. Thank you.
Okay. We'll take public comments at this time.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, City Manager and staff, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My losing our high school English instructors said, good writing is rewriting, and I'm gonna propose some rewriting here. Now, we've already opened the issue about whether the merits of having this letter or not, and I think another speaker's gonna talk about that. But I'm an engineer, I like numbers, so I'm gonna talk about numbers. The memo says that the, correctly, that the current estimate for Hawthorne Boulevard is 2.96 billion, and that the ask in the letter is, whoops, 1.84 billion. Now, that's 62%. And to me, that's, if you, if I'm a federal official, I'm thinking, that's a nonstarter. I mean, you don't have as much, you want us to have more skin in your game than you're willing to put in, you're on yourself? So I think that number ought to be a lot smaller. So how much smaller? Now, there's a, the metro staff created a funding plan for, they, they have secured funds, but they have a plan for unsecured funds in a board report. Here it is, right here. And I've expanded the unsecured funds chart, and, and which would include this, this ask here, this gap. And I've got here, so it's unsecured funds, funds plan, the source, local, state, and federal, for the hybrid row and the Hawthorne Boulevard options. And so the, if you look here, there's nothing, let's see, it's about 800 million for the hybrid row. It's about 1.4 billion. So that's a smaller number than the ask here. And the federal here on this chart is 700 million. This is just a plan, they just sort of made it up. And so what I'm proposing is that if you're gonna have an ask at all, it ought to be, ought to be somewhere between the 700 million and this number. And if you take the average, it's about a billion. But I like the idea of coming in under a billion. That has a certain mathematical and psychological appeal. And at first, I thought, how about 999 million? Wouldn't that be fun? But it sort of sounds kind of facetious. So how about 963 million? Because if the total's nine, 9.6... Because if the total's 9, 9.6 billion, if they put 963 million, then, well, you know, California state, local would have about 2 billion. So that's, that's my, that's my presentation here. Let's see what else I've got. So that if you, if you have a lower, I recommend a lower ask, and I think that that's about 25% of the, let's see, about one, it's about one-third, or a little less than a third. So you're asking for not 62% of the project, but it's about a third of the project. Which to me, I think, just straight away has more likelihood of being approved. Okay, thank you for hearing my numbers. If anybody wants to see the board report, you know where I am, or you can, you know how to find me. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Annette Owens on the row. I don't think that we should be asking for any money, because I don't believe that Metro has been transparent and on the up and up, and will actually use this money for anything but what they've already been railroading, pun intended, which is down the row. I just think that any money they, they get, or any money we ask them to get, is gonna go for the row. They, they have pretended to be weighing these different alternatives and just really playing in our faces. I think that they're gonna go down the road no matter what, and we shouldn't ask them for any money. And my question is, do they actually have enough right now to do the hybrid row? I mean, do they need money from federal government? Because if anything, we should say, sorry, no, we don't, we don't want federal government to give them any money. That's just my two cents.
Yes, sir.
Hi again, Joshua Gorman. For me, in my perspective, regardless if the letter falls on deaf ears, I really think that as a council, we need to, I would like for there to be representation with the city as a whole as to which direction you guys are gonna go. Remember, the residents here, we're all, you know, everybody's, we have a lot of public support and investment on this. And as a resident, we're looking for support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again, everybody. Thanks for having us. Thanks for doing this. I think that, I don't know if you should do it or not, because I don't know if Metro is being genuine with us with anything. I feel like this shows that as a city, we are being genuine. And we are putting our letters, our whatever behind what we, what we said earlier this year. And what we said earlier this year was, we don't want it. But if it's gonna be going somewhere, where is the best place to put it? And we said down Hawthorne Boulevard. From what we've heard from Metro, they're telling us it's an option and it's not really an option. So I don't think they're being truthful with us. And that, I mean, I came into this project two years ago bright eyed and bushy tailed, thinking that everybody was genuine and everybody was telling the truth. It turns out they're not. So my worry with this project is if we ask for money and we go in bright eyed and bushy tailed, and we say, please help us with this project we genuinely want done, or we not genuinely want done, but we want, we would rather have this than this other alternative. If we go in saying this, that they could potentially actually take that money and put it towards the row. And my other thought is, if they, if they, if they're trying to skirt NEPA, they're not trying to do a good project. Because if they were doing NEPA, it would be environmental justice for the community. And if they're trying to get around that, which I've heard that they have lobbyists in Washington trying to get around that, they are not coming to the table being genuine. So I'm just, I'm just worried, I'm worried about our city. I'm really proud of our city. I'm really proud of everybody for, for doing that and for being genuine and trying to do the best project, but I don't think Metro is, so thanks for doing this. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good evening, council and mayor. I just want to reiterate what everyone else has said. I like the idea of a letter. I'm just, have major concerns about having a guarantee that that money on some rare chance that we actually got federal dollars. We need some kind of guarantee that it wouldn't be used for the row and that it would only be for Hawthorne Boulevard. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay.
Yeah, I was wondering perhaps, you know, maybe something that we could do is, have we ourselves had the opportunity to reach out to our federal representatives? We have new members representing us. Is it possible to reach out and maybe the subcommittee can perhaps get meetings with our offices just to kind of plead the case and just kind of get their fill on, you know, especially with, you know, the new administration? Something that could be to our advantage or plead the case, you know, just to see what they're thinking.
Mayor, council, we can look at that. I know last time, that was done by the previous subcommittee that was seated, so we definitely could, if I recall, we can definitely meet with the subcommittee and then set something up and with their direction, meet with the federal level and the state level too, representatives.
I just think we need to try something that perhaps could be just a little more effective or be strategic about how we're reaching out to people.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, I'm kind of concerned as well. Listening to the speakers tonight. I do wanna pitch for federal funding to be applied to Hawthorne Boulevard, alternative three. But I'm kind of concerned, just like some of the residents, that if there's money available, federal money is available, they could then take that money unless it's restricted to alternative three and just apply it to the row. Now, they will have to go out and do NEPA, I understand, because from what I understand, they did not do NEPA. At least they haven't done NEPA so far. But with their federal monies, they could perhaps go back out and do NEPA. And then you would have, you would have it on the row, which I am opposed to having it on the row. I like alternative on three best. So that's my quandary. Do we send it out? And then have, have them, and it's kind of hard to, it's kind of challenging, I should say, to have it restricted to where you, especially once you get in the metro's coffers. When it gets into their account, unless there's some restrictions on it, with, that prohibit you from doing it otherwise, what's, what's gonna stop them from saying, you know what? We got a budget shortfall of $800,000, but we had a million dollars from, and these are just numbers I'm just throwing out, out. But we got a million dollars from the federal government. And it's gonna cost us 300,000 to do NEPA. So let's go ahead and do NEPA, you know, to satisfy, you know, everyone that we're obligated to satisfy in terms of the environmental analysis. And then you have it on the row when it could be argued that without federal funds, you, you wouldn't have a project on the row. Or on Hawthorne Boulevard. I don't know where they are in terms of financing. Some people say they already have the money for the row. That's the rumors. But I don't know that for certain. I know, I do know, but I'm not sure. But I, I have heard that they don't have the money, of course, for Hawthorne Boulevard. But if they secure federal funds, they could have the money for Hawthorne Boulevard and simply not apply it to Hawthorne Boulevard. That's what my concern would be. So although I put this on the, I asked for this to be on the agenda, I was kind of surprised when I saw it on here, because that was way time ago. And things have changed, you know, since then. So I don't know. So I'm, I'm looking for this, this body's guidance.
Can I suggest that the subcommittee meet up, maybe talk about strategizing, maybe meeting with new representatives that have, that were elected in the latter part of the year, last year, to kind of strategize? I mean, it's always helpful to get their input and they're newer and probably giving our perspective would be, might be beneficial. And then see from there what they suggest is the best approach.
Frank, tell the view.
I, I think in any battle, we have to provide a united front. And, and like I said, I'm, I think I'm getting mixed messages, because some, it seems like we're in favor of it if it's on Hawthorne. And others, other of us are saying, no, we don't want it at all. And, you know, and, and if we're gonna be wordsmithing the, the letter, I mean, something like adamantly opposed to it 100%, but, you know, if you can give these findings exclusively for, for the Hawthorne alternative, you know, maybe something we could look into, but, but if that doesn't, if, you know, if, knowing government the way it works, it's like, maybe even that's too risky. And maybe we shouldn't at all, other than say that, no, we don't want the sea line going through Landale. I don't know if that's the consensus of this, of this council. So if, if you can enlighten me, I'd like that. Anyone?
In my case, I, I don't want it to go through Landale, but knowing the government, it's gonna go through Landale. So I'd rather start now saying, I don't want it through the row. Let's push it Hawthorne Boulevard. I don't think it's gonna happen until 20, 25 years from now.
I'll be dead.
But.
Me too.
No one wants.
Be good and dead.
No one wants a metro to go through their city. But they're gonna do it. So we have to decide, do we want it on the row or do we want it on Hawthorne? I personally want it on Hawthorne. I don't want the green space that we have currently to disappear. It, it's also gonna inconvenience thousands of families that are living on the row. So with that said, no, I don't want it, but I'm choosing Hawthorne.
Thank you.
Okay. All of that, I agree with you, Shirley, but going down Hawthorne or the row, I think, like Robert said, there's inkling they're going down the row. I don't want it, period. We have, Metro buses going through Landale. Tell them to take the bus to go to Torrance. We do not need that here. And I know for a fact that all the money in the state level has already been spent. They won't pick it up again until September, so maybe we think on this some more. But surely, God bless you, you think you want it on Hawthorne Boulevard, you wanna. I personally, my personal opinion, only me, it's going down the row. I hate to say it, but I really believe it in my heart, it's going down the row. Metro's crooks. And we can say, we can write this letter and say we went down the row, I mean, down Hawthorne Boulevard, but I think their minds are already made up. And we're just shoving it into the wind. Because I think, personally, I think it's already made up.
Yep.
So if you could have just done this letter, too.
But if we don't push it and continue to fight for Hawthorne Boulevard, no matter if it's gonna go through the row, we have to continue to fight and say, we don't want it through the row. Continue to say, no, no metro either through Landale or the row. Our voice needs to be heard. We're, just because we're a small city and we don't have the funds that Torrance has, we still have to fight. Our residents need to know that we're backing them.
You say we're not fighting.
But you just said, oh, you know that it's gonna go.
My personal opinion, yes. Okay, that's my personal opinion.
But we still have to fight it.
And I am, I'm saying no build.
Yes, ma'am.
I still want to suggest that the subcommittee meet and perhaps discuss reaching out to our new representatives and perhaps a strategy, something that we haven't tried before. You know, other than the letters, just may, I don't know to what effect, you know, maybe we do, I don't know. I've suggested in the past, getting like public relations firm to like help, you know, promote messaging and whatnot. But I think the subcommittee should meet, look at where we, we are at currently. And then also look and see, are there funds? What are they saying on paper? And then report back to us before budget season comes around. That way we can see whether or not we want to make an ask.
Okay, so who's in favor of the subcommittee, send it to the subcommittee?
I think we are.
Send it to the subcommittee.
Consensus.
Yeah. Okay. So for the ladies and gentlemen in the audience and at home, we're gonna send this to the subcommittee and have them to flush it out.
Right. We'll take care of that, mayor and council. Not a problem.
All right, cool. Okay, we're on item 14, community development, department duties, overview of operations and customer survey.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. The item is the community development duties, overview of operations, and customer survey. The community development department consists of two main divisions, planning and building. Planning is responsible for the orderly growth of the city. And the way we do that is through the implementation of a zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance establish what type of uses is allowed in residential zone, commercial zones, industrial, open space, and so on. It also has development standards where it provides regulations in terms of parking, height setbacks, just a variety of development standards on how a developer has to build certain properties and uses. Also, part of the building is life safety review. They review structural of how a building is constructed structurally. The utilities such as mechanical, electrical, plumbing, grading, compactions. All of their codes and regulation is set forth by Title 15, which adopts by references the building code, the plumbing code, electrical code, and planning code. So that's the two main divisions of the planning department. And so in 2024, we did a analysis of the types of services that we provided to residents, contractors, and developers. And at the administrative part for planning staff, we reviewed 113 site plan reviews. 17 were commercial and 96 was residential. We also approved 64, or reviewed 64 fence permits for height and compliance within the required setbacks, whether rear, side, or front yard. We also had 58 flatwork permits to make sure there was at the proper ratio in terms of landscaping and hardscaping. 172 planning inspections and about 1,000 counter visits with the public. In terms of building, we had 2,200 counter visits regarding permits and inspection questions. In terms of building application, we had 85 applications a month. And in terms of building inspections by our building inspector, it's about 100 building inspections a month. So community development staff goal is to maintain a high customer satisfaction and to provide a fast level of services. And so there are timelines when a project is submitted. We try to strive and review it within a certain amount of periods to provide faster customer service. A lot of the statistical analysis in terms of the timeline is written in the staff report. Staff is available to answer the questions about the timeline. And this comes to a, we drafted a survey, a community development survey. And in this survey, it talks about, or it provides input for anyone who wants to fill out the survey. Who they are, what type of project they, they applied for. It talks about how is their interaction with staff, the timeline with, and so there's various questions. And then it also provides them with comment boxes and how would they rate staff's criteria. And so staff is available to answer any questions, but it is recommended that the council receive and file this report and provide direction to staff. but it is recommended that the council receive and file this report and provide direction to staff.
Okay, thank you for that report. Let's hear from Suarez.
Okay, so when I had requested this item, I had envisioned having a non, a separate entity conducting the surveys. Just for the simple fact that a lot of times, if you're going to give a negative review, let's just say, there might be concerns about backlash and whatnot. I'm not saying that's the case, but with a lot of government entities, people try to stay under the radar a lot just because they don't want to become a target or if they have to use their services in the future. You know, they don't want to be there, that to affect them. Also too, a lot of times, if the city is, staff is the one conducting the surveys, there might be some bias with the way that it's reported out or even the questioning. I want to see if there's maybe a low cost firm or company or something that people could give their evaluations to. Maybe have it, you know, on the emails at the end on a signature line, you know, how did we do type thing or something. Just because I feel like it does need to be separate. And a lot of times too, these people that conduct the surveys are good at impartially giving the results and the way that they ask the questions and whatnot. So that was my issue is I don't necessarily want to add more to SaaS plate. I would like it to be an impartial party that's reviewing those.
Any feedback?
That sounds like a great idea. We'll definitely look into that and bring that back and look at impartial firms that take surveys. I mean, we know plenty of them, we see the surveys come in from the state and feds every day. So we could look at one of those firms they're using.
Let's hear from Frank Talavera.
Okay, I just have two questions. Under the building section on the last, on the backside of the page, it talks about the county building safety department that's here on Tuesday. Why is it so limited, just to Tuesday? Is there, is there not enough need to have, have that person longer or is that person not available or?
So the way it's set up is we provide a counter service. And the person we're talking about is a civil slash structural engineer provided by the county. So she, the current appointment is that she's here Tuesday morning. But anyone is able to visit the county, I believe in the South LA office near Lenox. So if anyone needed to see her, you're more than welcome to go to the county's office. But it was just the structure to have at least someone there in the morning. And it happened to be on a Tuesday where they're available to answer any questions from the public and in terms of plan checking, what's the next steps, agency referrals, and so on.
So the, so the other option would be if I can't make it Tuesday, I go to, I go over there by Lenox. Okay. And get the same service.
So from my understanding, yes, there is an appointment. So sometimes, like for example, our civil, our assigned planning checker, she's, she may be at that office on, she may be available like Tuesday, Thursdays. And so there's different people, so, but we do schedule it with our civil, senior civil engineer. If someone needs to see him, he is also over, he's basically her boss so that he can help the city of Longdale because they're specialized. Some of the staff, they know Longdale and they know the construction project in Longdale. So in talking to building and safety, they do prefer a assigned engineer just to look at Longdale projects, to expedite it.
And the other question I had, you talked about a timeline. Do you have a flow chart or a worksheet that tells the, the person applying, what's the timeline and how many days should they expect it to happen to be?
I'll have to get back to your council. Let me look at what documents we have and I can get back to your council on what we have in terms of our applications and timelines and permit process. I know we have a generic permit process, but I can't bring it up to my memory right now.
Because here you say like for site plan reviews, fence permits, flat work, it's 10 business days turnaround. So, but after that, what happens, how many days, what, when can I, when would I be able to expect some other communication? Like from the city?
So if we're talking about a site plan review within the 10 business days, we should give you a correction letter or a conditional approval letter, depending on what type of improvement is being made. So that's our process. So if you have a correction letter, your designer, engineer would have a certain amount of times to draft a response comment so that we can review it again for compliance.
And, and I know that it all doesn't fall on, on your department, but it falls on the architect or the person applying. You know, once you notify them, if they, if they did their due diligence and got that back, you know, I just want to know if they, if they can, if they can expect like a, like a timeline, okay? Already did this. Because if they sit on the project and don't do anything till 20 days later, well, that's, that's not our fault. But let's say they do the due diligence, they, you give them their notice and they do it. And so from that point on, like, we can say, okay, like, you can expect an answer in, in 10 days or five days.
So we're always in communication with the developers too. We're, we're also, we don't only communicate via like plans. We also discuss review comments if they're having issues. And, you know, we look at our planners and engineers. We're trained to recognize what the next step is. We're always available, that's why we have a lot of counter. We're open in terms of our counter service, we're open from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM to answer any questions from the public. So if you go during those counter hours and you have an issue, we would sit there and explain the next steps for you, whether building or planning.
Thank you.
Suarez.
Yeah, I'm going to retract my.
Okay, Quavis.
Is there a cost to get another plan checker if we want an additional day in the city? Like, let's say Tuesdays and Thursdays so that things move a little bit faster?
Yes, there's a, a cost, we could talk to the county. I don't know if they have the staff available, but we can talk to them and see if there's availability of a plan checker. The plan checkers are available, as Peter mentioned, Monday through Friday at the county South LA office next to the sheriff's station. However, they're here specifically when people have issues at the counter in the morning on Tuesdays. And also available with appointments. But we definitely could look at, see if, if there's a necessity to add another plan checker. I don't know if they have them available because of the fires. They've had to make a lot of changes and shifts around, but we can talk to them about that.
Well, I, I get it that the fires, but they can't forget a city that, you know, has the same needs. Well, not the same needs at the ones from the fire, but just because there was a fire doesn't mean that you could put, tell these cities, oh, I can't send you anybody because we're 100% in Pasadena or Palisades. They have to provide us the same services everyone else. So if, if there is the possibility of bringing the checker, the plan checker one more day to expedite these cases, then what's the cost?
We'll have to look into that and get back to the council. We'll have to review that on our budget as well. We'll definitely get back.
Okay. Suarez.
Sorry, now I remember. So part of the reason to bringing this forward is how we can make things easier for the residents. The feedback that I get is a lot of times it's, you're going into an area that this isn't your expertise. So you don't know how to read the codes, you don't know what the requirements are. And so I'm hoping this will shed light on maybe some things we can do. The other thing that I remember a while back hearing these reports from staff was the biggest thing was, I think, staff time with looking at Google Maps, looking through the permit records. And I think we are working on a system that we can use, but we need to find something that will streamline all of that. That way, everything centralized in one location. I've heard people say that their applications have somehow gotten lost, you know? And I know we're doing a lot of emailing back and forth, so that's why I'm strong on getting some kind of system eventually that you can upload your documents, you can track the progress. And hopefully that streamlines a lot of things as well. But I think we do need to figure out what our residents are saying, what they're having trouble with. And I'm hoping this is a step in the right direction. That way, the feedback we get can be implemented into processes and how, processes and whatever databases or whatnot, or infrastructure we need to help implement the feedback we get.
Okay.
So can we bring it back and see what quotes look like for implementing something for people that have submitted plans or have dealt with the department? And look at costs, like that's the number one thing, I think.
Definitely, mayor and council, and we're, staff's working on the RFP in the departments of putting together, you know, big RFP to send out to get quotes on that based on direction received from council a few weeks back. And we'll definitely get back to you on the additional plan checker here at the city.
And the survey, right?
Oh, and the survey, excuse me, yes, and then, then how do you, how, looking at it outside firm to do a survey.
Okay. Okay, we're on item 15, reports of attendance or slash meetings from council members. There you go, Frank.
All right, thank you. Well, I, I was very, I was very busy last week, so, but all was, all of it is good news. On Wednesday, the 19th, I met with Chelsea and other residents from the row. I'm trying to get updated and educated as much as I can. I've been watching some of the videos on Metro's, on Metro's website. So I met with them and then also I attended the neighborhood watch that happened. So it was exciting, I met some residents there and talked about some of the concerns that we have in, in our city. Then on Monday, the 24th, I met with three department directors. I met with the finance director and his staff. And I want to thank each of them for, for spending their time. I, I think I just, it was supposed to be only an hour, but it turned out to be almost two and a half hours with each one. So I want to thank, I thank them for their patience and gained some insight about the city's financial health and, and where we're going. When I met with the community development director, when I met with Peter, he was, his department is the one I know most because I've been there so many times with the situation that I had going on. But he, we had interesting, a very interesting talk and, and a lot of enlightenment for me as what they do in that department. Also, his staff also, you know, just because of, I have been in there a few times already, very cordial, very professional. Then I met with assistant city clerk with Yvette. So we had a good conversation and I just want to say from all the departments that I, that I, that I met with on all the days, I could just see, I was in awe of the pride, of the pride they have working with, within our city, working for Longdale. So I was really happy to see that. On the, on Tuesday, the February 25th, I met with Luchel, the public works director and his staff. And that was the, I think, the most lengthiest discussion we had. So, but thank you, Luchel, for bearing with me and answering my questions and giving me a tour of the city yard. And then on Wednesday, I met with Michael Reyes. Thank you, Michael, for all your insight and your department. Every director talked about how proud they are of their employees giving of themselves, making, that is just not a job. It's, it's home, it's, it's their, it's, it's, you know, they have this feeling or sense of community and, and wanting to do their best for, for Longdale. So I was appreciative of that. And then also on Wednesday, I met with the community service director, Jason. We had a nice discussion and talked there. And I don't feel bad, I, that his, that our conversation wasn't as long as the others. But, but I, I thank Jason for telling me about the services that we have for the community and things like that. So thank you, Jason. And then on Thursday, the 27th, I attended South Bay Workforce Investment Board orientation. And I learned a lot about that, got some numbers there, got some contacts. Then on Friday, February 28th, I attended the South Bay Legislative Meet and Greet that was held in Torrance. So I was very busy this last week and I want to thank council member Kearney. He's like a big brother. You got your cards? You got your business cards? Okay, and then he pushed me into Tina McEnroe and he pushed me over there with the, with the city officials. So thank you, Pat, for, for showing me the ropes. So, so I appreciate your, your time and, and helping me out with, with everything. So lastly, as we get, as we begin the month of March, and this Saturday being March 8th, we celebrate International Women's Day. So I personally would like to recognize and honor all the women of the world, especially the women who have affected my own life over these last 63 years. Specifically, my mother, rest in peace, who raised my siblings and I in a loving, loving home and made our home the most awesome place to grow up. I want to give a shout out to my wife, Mabel Talavera, who for the last 30 years has been the wind beneath my wings. I've always said, in her support of me, that every diploma, every degree that I've earned should have her name alongside of mine. Because without her, I couldn't be the teacher that I was at one time. I couldn't be the pastor and I couldn't be the council member. So thank you to all the women who have touched my life. Thank you for all the women that, that we have today that serve with us also. So God bless all of you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Suarez.
I can't follow that. I, I wasn't, I attended for my first meeting, Contract Cities Board of Directors Meeting in Pico Rivera at WRD, Water Replenishment District. And so I got to meet a lot of people. It's, it was good for networking. And then they did give us an update on what they're doing, their different plans, they have a lot of facilities. And by the way, every May they put on a water festival, it, it's the best. If you haven't gone to it, it's in Lakewood, I believe. Early May, go to it because they have a bunch of events. It's put on free or at least with our taxpayer dollars. And you can bring the kids, they have food and just different booths. So I definitely recommend going there in May. And then this, last Thursday, I attended the South Bay Cities Council of Government Board of Directors Meeting. There was a lengthy discussion around Measure A, which is, is it the half cent? Sales tax forever for homeless services. They are in the process of deciding how much of the funds to be allocated towards the different regions. So that money will get, some of it will go to the COG to implement. And from what I understand, all the COGs have kind of bonded together to try and get the most money. I know LA City is trying to get a huge chunk of it. And so a lot of discussion was around that and how we're trying to advocate for more funds to go through the COG so that the cities can use them. And that was all that I had. So I'll pass it along, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Quavis.
Okay, this one's going to be quick because unfortunately I didn't attend any meetings, but I want to remind everybody of cleanup week coming up, March 15th through the 23rd. Right, Michael? Okay. During this week, you do not need permits for garage sales. So this is your opportunity to have your garage sale instead of putting your items on the sidewalk for the trash person to come and pick it up. Maybe you can make a couple of dollars by selling your junk. We also need volunteers for March 22nd for our city cleanup day. We also need volunteers for March 22nd for our city cleanup day. It's at 9:00 AM, I believe, out here. We meet here and then we walk around the city and pick up trash. So please come out and help us. Most of us in the council will be here picking up trash throughout the city. So volunteers are needed. And with that, that's it.
All right. Well.
Mayor Pro Tim Kearney. I said most of it already. I attended neighborhood watch. There were some great questions asked. Individuals bringing the three E's in again. I think we all know who the three is. I attended the South Bay Web Orientation. I introduced Frank to some people. Actually, I kind of pushed him to people. I attended the South Bay Legislative Meeting Read in Torrance. That's why I pushed him to Tina McKenna, Mark Warneck, Brett, a lot of people. And then we cornered Tina McKenna because, you know, Frank's not tiny, so I had Tina between us. And I asked her about funding for the Youth Development Center. And that's when she told me her funding starts in September. So hope the city reaches out and takes some of her money and Richardson's too. Yeah. It's in our money. Also, I want to, well, I'll let you talk about Little League. And with that, I will pass it on to the mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pro Tim. Okay, I had an impromptu meeting, which is unscheduled because I ran into Dr. Holly Mitchell on the row as I was exercising slash surveying the row. And she gave me a quick tutorial on the markers, the yellow, you know, the yellow markers? Yeah, I always wondered what those was about. And the, guys know what the yellow markers are about? So the yellow markers, so those pipelines under, and the yellow markers mean there's a pipeline here. Okay. And then, of course, they have like the name of the, who's responsible for the, the, the pipeline, whether it's petroleum or, or gas or whatever it is. So I got a, so that's the only event that I went to. But I, I do have a couple of announcements. One is the March to 8th, Saturday, is going to have the opening day of the Longdale Little League at 10 o'clock at Jane Adams Park. So that's on March to 8th at 10 o'clock, Little League, Longdale Little League opening day. Also, I have a question, Mr. City Manager, regarding the amnesty program that we did right before the holiday, that we adopted before the holiday. And how are we promoting that, promoting that program?
Yes, Mayor Council, we promoted, we promoted that program on our webpages as well as we did a minute more and we put it on our social media.
And how did it go?
I have to let staff answer that one. I don't have all the details on it.
It's my understanding that a lot of people inquired about the, the project, but for one reasons or another, they were unable to fully comply due to various issues. But they were, there was a lot of interest. Main, the main thing was they were looking for the program for new construction versus the program intent was to provide an amnesty for past projects done without permits. So.
To bring them into compliance.
Correct.
Okay. All right. And so what did we learn from that? Is it, is it worth doing it again, extending it, or what do you think?
I, I guess we can discuss it, but the major obstacle was because there was code issues that disqualified them. That was the main, one of the main barriers on what I heard.
Well, the ideal behind it was before you got a code issue, you could bring them into compliance through the amnesty program.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I can answer because I did field some of them on my hours with the city manager. And many of the, the folks that I talked to had went over to talk to Peter, I think it was about 30, talked to about a handful. Their big concern was opening Pandora's Box because maybe there was, you know, we didn't go and look at aerials and so I didn't specifically look at aerials or pull up any openings on other properties. But they did express their concerns about if they had something code, what else did we find? So they were concerned about that. A lot of residents, they liked the idea and they appreciate the council and the mayor bringing the program forward, but they, maybe they had a little bit more than they thought on their property. So they said they think about it. At least the handful that I talked to said they would consider it. They would just, they didn't want to open Pandora's Box if they had an ADU, a garage conversion. As the council as well, where we have a lot of additions, our homes are a little bit old and they were built after World War II, they were two bedroom, one bath homes. So they were inadequate, people have added on. Thankfully, the council, in your wisdom, added on provisions in our code to allow expansions, but a lot of folks were not interested in opening that Pandora's Boxes, what they told me. They said not at this time because of the, maybe the cost right now. They said once costs and construction and materials went down, maybe they would come back later and look at, at it. But they definitely, if the council look at that year to year, that would be something we could, you know, they'd be okay with. So maybe next year, we can look at it, or this coming year, look at it again if the council so deems it so.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay, that's it for the council reports. All right. Okay, it's an adjournment time. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, March 17th, 2025, in these here chambers. It is 8:43.
And remember the word green, it's St. Patrick's Day. That's the only day I'm a saint is 17th.
We are adjourned.
Really? I might need another new tie. I think the ones I can find on sale, there weren't green ones.